Same old, same old.
I don't, I don't know that. I've got to get my whisk out here. All right. Okay. Talk to you later. I won't be able to get up for the pledge. I can't get up out of this chair without him. So I'm not going to incorporate the whole world to get me up out of this chair. So I'll be saying the pledge that day.
Well, here's your locker.
You know how big a pain in the butt that is. Okay. Dolores is not messing with that stupid thing. I've been working on, I've been doing some exercise.
It's being stubborn.
If the leg, if the leg's on good. So anyway, so we'll see. Turn this stupid thing off.
Okay, it's 6:30. We're gonna get started. I'll call the meeting to order, March 11th, 2024, meeting of the Westport Town Council. We will start with a pledge to the flag.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Have our council members had a chance to read the minutes from the February 12th meeting? If so, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
So move.
Can I have a second, please?
Aye.
Okay, Dolores, second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dolores, since Gloria is in the back, we're down a person tonight, so Gloria is doing double duty. She's in the back. She does have a microphone and she'll be able to talk if she needs to. But everything that we sign, I think we're just gonna pass to the left. And Dolores, if you would just let it pile up down there on the corner.
Okay.
You'll kind of be the catch-all. Okay. Uh, the next is funeral deeds. There's seven of them. And the adjustments and the payroll vouchers and the monthly bills, those all get rolled together. I've looked at them. If anybody else had a chance to look. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion made by Dolores. Can I have a second?
I will second.
Jenny, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of approving the funeral deeds, adjustments, payroll vouchers, and monthly bills indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I don't think there was anybody. Thank you. Motion was unanimous. Okay. Harry liked to sign everything at the end. Because of the meeting after the meeting. I don't want anything to get lost, so I'm gonna go ahead and sign these now. So if we can have patience here while we go through these. We should have elevator music for this.
You start it, Joe. Start the song.
One thing I forgot to mention, when we get to the public input part at the end of the agenda, the three-minute rule still applies, so if you do have something to bring up from the floor, I ask that you organize your thoughts and make sure they're concise and brief as best you can. Ready to come down here? Is that all the deeds, Russell? Rachel, it looks like you're gonna be next. You want to come on up to the mic? Make sure it's turned on. I don't remember turning it on. Is your light green?
I don't see a light.
Please. There we go.
Can you hear me? I do have a short memo. May I pass it out?
Sure.
I did not have a chance to email it.
Russell, you still got some signature stuff there? Russell, you still got signature stuff?
Sorry about that.
Okay.
No, I think I would pass it. This is just.
Oh, is that your copy?
Yeah, that was my copy.
Okay, my bad. My bad.
I was gonna say you hadn't signed it either.
Some of the board members, well, we all receive it electronically. Russell and I think Dolores has theirs printout. Yep, it shut off. Uh, has theirs printout, printed out, hard copy. Okay, now you're good.
Okay, I'll be quick, just a short update. We had a check-in meeting last week. USDA was present regarding the wastewater project. We talked about the schedule. At this point, we're still waiting on USDA's approval. There is a public notice that you'll see go out in the paper on March 12th, 14th, and 16th. After that, there's a 14-day period, and then there's one more publication. After that time, I expect USDA to be able to, to give us permission to go out to bid with the wastewater. There's a little bit of phasing they asked us to accommodate. And I have reached out to the other funding agency who has provided us a grant and let them know about the schedule change. I'm waiting to hear back if they have any additional requirements to make that possible. Other than that, um, back in January, we talked about a little contract amendment. I went ahead and gave that to Alex. I don't think I sent it over to you guys already to review, so he's got that. Processed that later. And then I added a note on the bottom about the water utility. We started communication with IDEM on that, so that, we will look for, setting up some kind of conference call near the end of the month, probably. And then I attached kind of a summary of our meeting last week, just so you all could see the discussion with USDA, what we're waiting on from them, and kind of the path forward on that, so. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for Rachel? Okay. Thank you. Make it quick. Come on up.
I just have a question on the ad that we did in January for the easement. Up to $10,000 hourly rate. Was there a reason why you couldn't, we couldn't, and I don't know if that was you or the town, why we couldn't get that easement agreement?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking, easement agreement. Oh, the, uh, this is the modification to, to go around the easement of the Cromer family, because we couldn't get it, okay?
Okay. It was more of a timing thing. The length of time it was taking to get the easement, we needed to move the project along a little quicker.
Are you wanting a copy of it?
No, 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 I'm just. I was just kind of wanting to know what, why, when you kept saying Cromer sisters, I didn't know who you were talking about.
Okay.
And then I realized you're talking about Mary Jane Shireman.
Yes.
And I didn't know why we were having a hard time getting ahold of her.
It's not her. It's, it was the other sisters, I think, that live out of state. We were having trouble reaching them.
And, and we, we weren't able to reach them through NJ?
Correct. Okay. Thank you, Rachel. Brad. So April 8th is the big solar eclipse. Brad Spear from, he is the Emergency Management Agency Director for Decatur County. I, uh, I think you contacted me, asked if you could come and talk about it a little bit, so. Enlighten us.
I won't take up too much of your time. Basically, we want to get out and talk about some of the effects we're gonna see on April the 8th. The biggest of which is gonna be traffic. The experts from the state have taken us all through the Kentucky, Oregon, Texas, all these other solar eclipses that have happened. And that's where this information's coming from. It's not stuff we've made up or they've made up. It's actually looking at the history of the past solar eclipse. The biggest thing is gonna be traffic. It's gonna cascade. Once I-74 fills up, they're gonna start using state highways. Everybody's got a little phone in their pocket and they look up on the map where the next road available is. And it just works its way down. Even in Kentucky and Wyoming, they had a lot of county roads get plugged up. So you will, if everything goes as they want, we'll probably see some effect out in the county. So we're trying to get around to the areas. As far as local businesses and things, I would prepare for additional sales, anywhere from 20 to 30%, especially gas, stores, tight places. Or if you advertise out on State Road 3 especially, people will see that last minute and make stops, is one of the things they saw. To give you an idea, down in Hopkinsville, which is Christian County, Kentucky, a couple from Columbus, Indiana went down there. Took them four hours to get where they were going. It took them 18 hours to get home. So we're gonna see a lot of people. Now, the weather obviously is gonna play a big part of that. Uh, if you go back over the last 12 years, there's a 30% chance we have complete sunshine and warm weather. So but if I don't plan on the worst thing, then bad things happen, so that's why I'm, another reason I'm here. Your eyes, that's another concern, especially with kids. They can do permanent damage if you look at it long enough. It's just like a high-intensity welder that you're looking at. I'm no optometrist, but they mentioned the same thing, the sand in the eyes that you get if you watch somebody weld. So welders' helmets are not strong enough to watch this script. There is an ISO standard glass that you can purchase. Visit Greensburg, has them for a dollar a piece. I know that's one place. But it's ISO 123 dash 2, I think. But it's all over the place, in the papers, on the radios, but get that ISO standard glass if you're gonna use it. If you've got a real young kid that wants to watch it, they even make eight-and-a-half-by-11 sheets of it, so you don't necessarily have to put eyes, or glasses on them. You can hold it over their face. The biggest word of the day is probably gonna be patience. All the hotels in Greensburg are sold out. The campgrounds are getting sold out. There's gonna be an event at the fairgrounds in Greensburg, which are Navy campsites, I think. They're gonna have petting zoos and different things there. They are, I think they're even gonna have some music now, is the last I heard. Pirate Park over by the high school, they're gonna have four or five concerts at different times during Sunday and Monday. But even if we have bad weather here, there are huge events in Indianapolis that are gonna let out and people are gonna go east. And one of the ways they go east is I-74. Then you get the cascade, they're using state highways. Even if we don't have a bunch of people in Greensburg, we're gonna have a bunch of people going through Greensburg, both to get where they're going and coming home. Schools are all out, so we don't have to worry about. We are positioning ambulances across the county. Law enforcement's gonna spread out across the county. Of course, you guys have locals, so that helps. Uh, I've asked all the volunteer fire departments, have one or two guys on station just in case, so they can at least get to the station and get a truck started out. So I'll let them get to do that. That's basically what I had. The other reason I'm here is to answer questions, if you've got any.
Yes, uh, I looked on the website that Greensburg, Decatur County had provided. It made comments on to, for people to please make sure that they run errands before.
Yeah.
They get medication before, they get some extra groceries. Hey, I've already got my peanut butter and jelly and an extra loaf of bread in the freezer, so I'm good for the day. But they're just saying that that is something that you need to do. If you need, if you want cash, get cash. Your cellphone, your internet could be overloaded. I mean, it is just amazing at some of the things that they are warning people that they might want to do prior.
The original estimates had four times your population, is what they were estimating, which would put Decatur County at 100,000 people. I don't think they're gonna have that many people in Decatur County. But if you add 20,000 people to Greensburg, you're gonna have a mess.
They're also saying, uh, if you have a trash pickup on that Monday, to make sure you realize that they may not be a trash pickup on that. Shortage of gas, you mentioned that though, didn't you? There is a toll-free number. Did you, it's a non-emergency number that you can call.
They have, they're gonna spend that up for Saturday and Sunday, 12 hours a day. We've got some people that are gonna volunteer it. We're trying to catch the visitor calls instead of calling 911 to say I'm lost, to be able to answer those questions or where the nearest gas is or whatever. Some of the other things, we've got tow truck drivers that are gonna be pre-positioned. They're gonna have gas in their vehicle to sell.
If there was a possibility that the electric went out, make sure you've got gas for your generators. It's just amazing at the stuff that they're.
We've been meeting for about 14 months on this. After 14 months, you start really getting into the weeds. The nearest porta potty that we could find was in, it's at Covington, uh, Kentucky. They've just all been rented out. You gotta keep in mind, this is 52 counties across the state that are gonna be affected by this total darkness. And it will get totally dark. I don't care if it's raining or if it's sunny. It's gonna get totally dark for about three and a half minutes. Things start acting strange in the three and a half minutes. The crowds that follow these, they're a little strange too, some of them, so. That's another thing. If, if this thing does, let me back up. Another thing that, that they mentioned, they haven't really talked about it in great deal, but if I'm in Greensburg, all the street lights, the security lights, all the headlights, there's a lot of them that wanna see this thing in total darkness, so they'll just get on the county road and take off to the right of the streetlights. So you're gonna have a lot of people just driving out in the county so they can watch it out there. Now, whether they drive out there for the full four hours or for the three minutes and 30 seconds, it's totally dark. I don't quite understand all of it anyways.
Is the whole event four hours from start to finish?
It's about, it's about three and a half. It starts at 1:30. I thought they said 4:35 on my paperwork, but yeah. For the partials. The actual total darkness is the three and a half minutes for Decatur County, right in the middle. And to keep that in mind, in Kentucky, when they went down there, it was just a minute and 20 seconds. So there's people from 31 countries that have met, or Indiana, so. I don't know. I just know there's gonna be a lot of people. That's one of my plans.
Realistically, you put some stats on there that mentioned that Indianapolis could see up to a million. Wilmington, 300,000 to 400,000, and Columbus, 100,000 to 200,000. Imagine if we just put half of that in this county, what's gonna happen?
That's why I'm here, because I, like I said, I don't know whether Mother Nature's gonna cooperate. None of us can predict that. Right now, there's three different forecasts out there for April the 8th. One is cloudy, one's rain, and one's sun, so.
Pretty good chance one will be right.
Yeah. But at least plan on that day of, April the 8th. Like she said, get it in front of you ahead of time, so you don't have to be traveling around town, going to the hospital for pharmacy and all. The hospital will remain open. As far as I know, they haven't canceled any electives in Decatur. Counties around us have. We've been meeting with all the counties around us. There's events in Bartholomew.
It's okay, Gloria.
Oh, that's too loud. Bartholomew, Ripley, Jennings has now got one spun up. The, uh, one small event in Rush County, so it's kind of all over the place. But those people have to go somewhere or have to drive a road to get home as well, so. That's gonna add dark load as well. DOT did say they are closing or not starting any road projects till after the 8th, so. That'll give us some help around here.
All right, any questions?
If you do, ema@decaturcounty.in.gov. Send it to me, call me. Brian knows how to get ahold of me, so. It's gonna get crazy here for about three weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. The next town council meeting is the day of the eclipse, April 8th. Let me say that's the next scheduled town council meeting. Put it to my fellow board members, do we move it one day or one week? What would your, what, you think still on Tuesday? I sent Bonnie the community calendar, I guess, that we would, we would vote for Tuesday, but you, you want to do it a week, April 15th, one week out?
Makes no difference to me, one week, whatever, whatever the majority wants.
I'd say one week, but I definitely want it changed because April the 8th is my birthday.
Well, I, I will make a motion then, and I'm gonna have to send Bonnie an updated calendar tonight, that we move the next town council meeting to Monday, April 15th. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yep, there it shut off. Gloria, you can flip the switch again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is an update on 106 South Poplar Street. Uh, this is the Trevor Moore property that we talked about last month. Uh, the first three pictures I've got here are the originals. Oh, did, oh, okay, it's there. And this is, the next one is the one that I took today. And I think this chair, whatever, I think that's a grill, and the umbrella have moved. And that's it, that I can detect. That's today. This afternoon. So. I, I think we're gonna start the clock for accruing the fines, is what I'm seeing. Russell, tomorrow at office hours, we can take a look at these pictures as well. Okay. That's today's, and that's, that's the previous. So it doesn't look like they've done much, if anything, to, to try to clean that up. All right. We do have a resolution to vote on. There's some outstanding checks that have not been cashed. And this is for over two years. As of December 31st, they can be declared void. Whereas pursuant to the above referenced Indiana Code, the town council wishes to declare the following checks void and direct the clerk treasurer to return the amounts indicated below. I think I've got a copy of that. I do. It's not a huge amount. 134, 47, and $3. So therefore be it resolved by the Westport Town Council that the following outstanding checks are cons, to be considered void, and the following amounts returned as follows. Adopted this 12th, 11th day of March. I'll entertain a motion, or actually, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-5. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Interesting, they talked about NDOT, Brad talked about NDOT projects. Uh, how many of you knew that State Road 3 is gonna get repaved this summer? Few of you, good, okay. Gloria and I have sent emails to this email that's on the screen, r41581@davomara.com. If you want to be included on updates on that project, you can send them an email. And as the updates come out, they will, they will send you those. So Gloria and I are gonna be, be on the updates, and anybody, I think, can send an email to that address and get on the list to be notified of project updates. Joe, you look like this is a surprise to you? No? Okay. 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 It, it's supposedly closing from the, the south city town limits of Westport to the bypass in North Vernon. I don't know how they're gonna close all of that at one time. Again, we, Gloria and I just got on the list. I haven't really talked to anybody. I did find the project on the NDOT website. So it, it is a bona fide real thing. And it did show the completion date, Q4 2024. So I'm hoping they get it done sooner than that. For us locals, we're, we're probably gonna end up going backroads to North Vernon for most of the summer, is the implication. Okay? All right. Community building report, Connie, do you have any update?
No, we get the.
Okay. 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 Gloria, can you turn on your mic? Putting her on the spot, but I think she knows what I'm gonna ask her. Last month, the Community Building Committee did ask about a fund that could be created to handle donations or capital improvements. I don't know exactly how it's gonna be worded. The good news is, that fund can be done, and I'll let Gloria tell us what she's learned.
It shut off on you, Gloria. So I did get some answers back, and we are allowed to open a donation fund. Alex did a home fund last year for deposits. We'll just ask them to do another home fund that's specifically for the community building. As a committee, you guys can figure out what you wanna call it, you can figure out what kinds of money you want to go into that. You can outline specifics as to what it can be spent on, and we would need to put all of that in the resolution, and then the council would approve it. So essentially, it's good news, you'll be able to spend as you want. If they give you 100,000, you can spend it this year, next year, whenever, but it'll always be there for the community building, and you'll have some control over, you still will have to go through me, checks will have to be written through me. But you can, you can have a ledger and keep track of it as well and be able to have control of that, so.
Thank you. And Russell, and for the rest of the crowd, I also got a phone call today from Kenny Marshall. He is one of the previous members of the Community Building Committee. And I relayed this information as best I could to him, what Gloria just shared with you, about how we plan on setting up a separate fund. And he was thinking that that would satisfy the old committee, that the checkbook, I believe there's a CD, that that would satisfy them as far as turning all that over to the town to be put into that fund. And.
I'll talk, or, excuse me. I'll talk to him, see where we're at. I have not.
Yeah. But he, he thought, just in talking me and him, he thought that would satisfy them. And it would always be there, it would always be visible as to what the total is in that fund. And then, like Gloria said, we could put stipulations that it could only be used for the building itself, would be the intent. Okay. ARP funding. We are gonna have to put our heads together as a council. And if anybody in the audience has ideas, we have to spend 142,957.48 this year. Gloria knows the details as to what that can be used for. There's, there's lots of ideas, but we've gotta come up with a list, we've gotta whittle it down, and we, we've gotta get this expended this year. It, it can be, it can be sidewalks, it can be used on the floor in, here in the community building. We, she looked into, last month, we talked about fire hydrants. Some of them are, are not working. Possibly using it for that, and that is a, a valid use of those funds. So I don't have any details right now, but I think we, as a board, probably ought to get a list. I've got a yellow light down here, Jenny. Oh, yeah, in, in addition to ARP funds that we have to spend, there is an Eli Lilly grant that the county is competing for. And the small towns, Westport, New Point, St. Paul, were included in, in the discussions. And with, that's being funneled through the Decatur County Community Foundation and Tammy Winning. And we were included in an update meeting this past Thursday. Dolores has a few updates on the details.
Yeah, Brian, Gloria and I sat in on that, and they have 5 million for the county. We feel, I shouldn't say this. Probably Greensburg will get the bulk of that. We don't know that, nobody knows that yet. But we figured during the meeting that maybe if we came up with some small things that maybe we might get lucky and get a little bit, you know, you don't know. So the portion of sidewalk down here by the four-way stop in front of where Marilyn and Mike Cooper used to live, I don't know the address of that. But that sidewalk is in bad shape, that could be something. The floor back here could be something. The gazebo. You know, I, I don't know, just, just something to say we got something.
Yeah.
And we, we have another meeting on March the 18th. And we probably need to have guns blazing by then to give them an idea of what we really want to use that money for, but any little bit helps.
The good news is, they're talking to us. They, they acknowledged us in the meeting. We were able to do Zoom. We were kinda high-tech, it was neat. They were, they were surprised that there was three of us in the room, me, Gloria, and Dolores. So it wasn't just one, it wasn't just Gloria, it wasn't just me, there was, there was a group of us. So we got acknowledged for that. All right. Damon, do you have anything to update? No updates? Okay. Yeah? Okay, try turning on your mic.
Can you go to the podium?
Yeah, there's several areas in town. I got one company in here today to start getting us bids on, and Lincoln Street was one of them.
For storm drainage?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Stormed there and the West Street, and I got a couple other small places that just drains need put in.
Okay.
So yes, it, it doesn't work. So I'm getting bids. I'm not saying they're gonna be approved and we do it, but I am getting prices on it, yes.
All right. Fellow council members, there will be an executive session on Friday, March 15th at 3:00 PM at the town hall. This is to discuss, and Alex. This is to discuss the litigation that we have going on, on the George Kahn property out there on Range Street. Range? No. Is it? Yeah, it is Range. Damon, is that your day off, Friday? Okay, that's right, that's what I thought. Okay. And then office hours tomorrow, 8 to noon. I think Russell is gonna join me. So Jenny works during the day, and she can't do it. But after Russell comes tomorrow, I will have had all Dolores and Glenn and Russell, all three, at the town hall with me during that four-hour window. So we do training, sometimes people walk in off the street. We look at the pictures and, and draw up the paperwork on the ordinance violations, is kind of becoming a good thing that we do. So. Okay. Does anybody else on the board have anything else that they need to bring up before I open the floor? Okay? I will open the floor for anybody that wants to bring up a topic. Okay, Jeff? You are recognized now for three minutes.
Pastor Jeff Moore from Westport Westland. A week from Sunday, we would like to do a Palm Sunday march. We've done that before in the past. I was just told that maybe I need to come get the blessing of the town council to do that. It's a 20-minute thing that will come down Main Street and go over by the Christian church and back down Walberry. Any questions?
Palm Sunday would be?
A week from?
The 24th?
That's correct, yeah. Probably from about 11:00 to 11:30. We're not gonna block any traffic or anything like that.
I think the Baptist Church has done that in the past too.
Yeah.
I don't, things are usually pretty quiet in town on Sunday mornings, thank goodness. So, yeah, I've, I've got no problem with that. I don't, I don't.
Just letting you all know that the crazy people walking down Main Street belongs to Westport Westland.
You're fine, you're fine. Gloria, I need, need you to flip the switch again too, please. There we go. Okay, Sandy, did you want, you have something?
Yeah, I would just like to request that this town council be aware of being more transparent with the community. You know, I know this doesn't apply to you, you guys weren't on the town council, but in November, it was brought up that the town wanted a new trailer for the utility workers. So $9,300 trailer, the town council approved it. It was stated that we could sell the old trailer and would maybe get almost half the cost of the new trailer when we sold the old trailer. The trailer was put up for sale December 14th, and it ended up four days later, sold to a town employee for $2,000, which was quite a bit less than the almost half that what we thought. I would just like to be aware that it, it kinda looks a little odd. You know, the, the cost of the trailer was never posted, it wasn't done in a sealed bid type of a thing. Whether what the trailer was worth or not, you know, just be aware of how it looks. I mean, kinda think if you guys kinda take, say, you guys are sitting out there and we're sitting up here, how would you feel if, if things were done?
What year was that, November 2022 or '23?
What was what?
What year?
The trailer?
What, what year was this, did the sale take place in, 2022?
It was at the November 2023 meeting. And the trailer was sold, it was listed for sale December 14th, and it was noted as sold on December 18th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Walter? Step forward and be recognized, sir. Step forward and be recognized.
Can you do me a favor and go back to the pictures of the tent city?
I don't know if that's the tent city, but this is the property that I was talking about.
Yep, that'll, that'll work. Can you show me anywhere in that picture that there's a bathroom or any place to use the bathroom at?
You're not gonna tell me somebody's living in that, are you?
Huh?
Are you gonna tell me somebody's living in that?
Yes, they're living there. There's two people living there. Why do you think we call it Tent City?
I, I didn't know that's what Tent City was. I thought it was across the street.
But there's people living in there, two people.
Okay.
Show me a bathroom in there.
Wow.
Yeah.
Honestly, I didn't know people were living in that.
That's the reason I've been, that's the reason I've been yelling about it.
I didn't know that was the, the tent city. I was thinking it was the burned-out house.
No, no. Well, it's a burnt-out house, though, it'd be my next one.
Okay, all right.
Why ain't anything been done on that? It's been almost a year now. You guys, you guys always yell about Kahn's house over there on the main road. I would give anything if that house was across the street from me right now. You've been down by my house, you see what it looks like.
We're working on it. It, it's a slow process.
I've heard this for a year old. And Tent City's been there for over that.
We've been here three months, Walter.
Huh?
We've been here three months.
But I couldn't get the other ones to do anything either, so it don't really matter.
I've done the paperwork on this one, and we're gonna, we're gonna turn up the heat, so. Give us a chance, it moves slow.
But why, why didn't Tent City shut down? They gotta have bathrooms and stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't have an answer for that.
It all runs down to me.
Joe, you wanna, you wanna comment? We got, we got an update here from Joe. Yeah, come on, listen up. Go ahead, sir.
So the property that we're looking at belongs to Trevor Moore. He was here at the town board meeting. His biggest thing was that he has people living in it. When people live out on the outside, there's no eviction process necessary, only if it's inside the home. These people, father lives next door, you can see it up in the right-hand corner, that's where Josh's dad lives. So basically, living back there underneath the tarps. We have, in the meantime, through a, through a state ticket, have trespassed them, legal trespass.
Okay.
With the owner. The owner was with us, and it was written out on a state ticket. And the, the thing we're getting into is, after our shifts or whatever, they come out of dad's and go right back in it. So I basically advised Trevor to go over, take a trailer, get rid of it all, and there's no place to come back to. With his health, you know, that's gonna take time, but I told him to get some of these kids or something like that and come over there and just knock it all down. That's the only way you're gonna stop. Now, if we catch him there, if Trevor calls us and we catch him there, they will go to jail, because it's a legal trespass. So it, it is being worked on as far as us and the owner. It's just, if, if you look over to the bicycles, the property across the street, there's a big bunch of stuff strapped down that they're moving one piece at a day. So they're, now they're putting it in Danny's yard.
Okay.
So it's creating another mess, but we have trespassed them from the property, and it's just a matter of either catching them there or going ahead and get this mess cleaned up so they can't come back.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay. Anything else from the floor? Going once, going twice. Connie, we need to change our clocks. Daylight savings time has kicked in. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Second? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.